The Twinsburg Board of Education, meeting for Wednesday, April 6th. I'm gonna call the meeting order right at 7:00 PM. Mr. Aho, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Felber.
Here.
Mr. Solera.
Here.
Mr. Curtis.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Here.
Mrs. Terrell Waldron.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Aho. Now, I invite you all to, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, and welcome to the students, staff, and families from Samuel Bissell Elementary and RB Chamberlain Middle Schools. This is the meeting of the Board of Education for April 6th, 2016. I'm Rob Felber, and I'm honored to be the Board President. Tonight, we are privileged to hear a presentation from the Twinsburg Police Association. Recognizing many of our fine educators, welcome Officer Dan Fido. We're looking forward to your presentation. Very shortly, your Board Administrators will be entering into negotiations with TSSA, our Twinsburg Support Staff Union. We look forward to a productive, and positive, and open negotiation with these hard-working members of the Twinsburg District. As a reminder to my colleagues and the community, law restricts us from discussing the details or proceedings of these negotiations. So while you may be curious, please don't ask. We're bound by Ohio now, law not to be talking during negotiations. As always on our agenda, our updates and approval to both classified and certified staff. As a highlight, there are several approvals on our agenda for our staff to add extra tutoring for our students in what we have dubbed "Extra Scoop." It's important to note the financing of this program will not cost our district anything, and is being covered by Title I funding. We know our Tigers will benefit from this extra helping from our staff. Also, a big shout-out to Akila Ervin, Grace Porrock, and Caleb Wenzel. They are THS students. They were recently inducted into the National Technical Honor Society, and I know they're making our Tigers proud all around. And I know I'm stealing the thunder when I say that from Mr. Curtis and his report from CBC. I should've moved this way. You know, but as it says in my paper, I get to go first. Now, on toward the business of our district, and without further delay, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to our Superintendent, Mrs. Powers, for the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening, Mr. Felber. Good evening, Board of Education. As always, it's so wonderful to see so many of our students and their families out this evening. We have lots and lots of wonderful students to celebrate, and we have lots of staff members to celebrate tonight, too. And we'll get to all that in one moment, but I do have a couple of announcements. Speaking of great news, I heard something really exciting today, Mr. Felber and Board. We have a sophomore at our high school by the name of Deisha Watson. Deisha was just informed that she is a recipient of the NSLI for Youth Scholarship, and she will be spending six or seven weeks this coming summer in China, studying Chinese. So, I'm quite sure Deisha is as excited as she can possibly be. We are certainly very proud of her ability to gain this scholarship, and Board of Education had the opportunity to visit China for about three weeks back in 2008, and it's an experience of a lifetime, and I think she's going to feel the same way. And we congratulate Deisha. We also congratulate our teacher of the Chinese language, Hong Zhang. Mrs. Zhang was behind all of this, so we appreciate her efforts in making sure that a student who has an interest in studying abroad will now have the opportunity to do that. So congratulations to Deisha. Board of Education, if you have been paying attention, our spring sports are off to a fabulous start. Our kids are doing exciting things on the field, and on the court, and all over the place. I wish the weather would cooperate a little bit better, but when we get to play, our kids are doing a fantastic job. So I invite you to take a look at our district website, and events that are postponed are noted on there, but please, if you have a chance, come out and support our kids. They're doing a great job representing our school district, and it's always a lot of fun to do just that. Board of Education, just a serious note, after more than a decade or so, you know that no child left behind, our federal law has been now reauthorized, and the new law is called Every Student Succeeds Act, or also known as ESSA. And the Department of Education has some time now to pull together the opinions of many stakeholders as they develop their plan to address the tenants of ESSA. Just wanna let you know, Board of Education, Jen Farthing, our Curriculum Director, Lori Slattery, our Curriculum Supervisor, and myself will be headed to Columbus at the end of April. We've been invited to be on one of the work committees, and will be once again representing Twinsburg at the table as we offer our opinions and advice as ESSA is developed as far as a plan goes, and then hopefully move forward through the various processes that the ODE must do then. So we look forward to serving on this very important committee, and I'm to understand that the ODE will be out and about across the state, so when there's opportunity for stakeholders such as the Board, or our parents, or our staff members to provide some input, now's the time. You know, ten years has passed since the federal law was reauthorized. That was another opportunity, and it doesn't come around very often. So if you have a lot to say about education in Ohio as it aligns to federal law, now's an opportunity to do just that. So we look forward to providing you feedback and updates as I'm able to do so as we're involved in the process. Board of Education, an exciting event is on Saturday, April 23rd. It is our Tiger Fit Fun Run. Mr. Bendis and our Wellness Committee have been very, very, very busy planning a morning of fitness and fun. I understand there's a Tiger Costume Contest this year, and there's also going to be a trophy for the elementary school who has the best participation. So kids, get your parents up early and come on out, and we hope it doesn't snow. It has done that in the past, but it's always a fun event. And once again, it is on Saturday, April 23rd, at Tiger Stadium, and it lasts about an hour or so, and we're asking that all participants please bring a can of fruit to support our friends at the Emergency Assistance Center. So we look forward to a morning of fitness and fun, and I hope to see everybody there. As Mr. Felber indicated, we have a special guest in our audience today, and that is Officer Dan Fido. Officer Fido is one of our great supporters from the Twinsburg Police Department, and annually, the Twinsburg Police Association provides a scholarship to one teacher at each of our schools. So this evening, Officer Fido is here to represent the Twinsburg Police Association. We welcome you. If you wanna come forward, please, and we are so excited about your presence here this evening at our board meeting. Yes, it is.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers, and the Board of Education members, and everybody here tonight. Like Mrs. Powers says, you know, we have the opportunity to provide that scholarship money to these teachers and recognize their outstanding efforts. We have a lot of interactions with the kids, and, you know, we can see, and they also express their appreciation, you know, when we ask them who they can talk to. We oftentimes mention a teacher that's really impacted their lives. So we, utilizing the school, we help, they help us pick these teachers. And with that being said, we wanna take a great honor in recognizing the Teachers of the Year for the 2015-2016 School Year. These teachers are hand-selected due to their personal example and professional competence. They have consistently achieved superior performance while instilling motivation and a sincere desire to see their students succeed. Because of their diligent efforts and unrelenting resourcefulness, they are respected and admired by all who observe them. Their initiative, perseverance, and total dedication to teaching reflected upon them, and we're in keeping with the highest traditions of the city of Twinsburg and the Twinsburg City School District. So when I call up your name, if you guys could just come up here, and we have a plaque and a certificate. Nancy Drain, Twinsburg High School. Julie Van Dyist, RB Chamberlain. Kelly Reich, Dodge. Allison Doyle, Samuel Bissell. And Shirley Browning-Wilcox. Hey, congratulations to all five of you guys. You know, it's great that we're able to recognize you guys for your efforts, and just keep up the good work, and it's appreciated.
Officer Fido, why don't you pose with a picture for these fine educators?
Mr. Felber, as you know, we have a wonderful partnership with our Twinsburg Police Department. As a matter of fact, just an announcement, on Monday, April 18th, it's going to be a day for our students not to be in session. It's a curriculum day for our staff. Our staff will be in session, but the reason I'm mentioning it is that is going to be the date of our next safety drill at Twinsburg High School. And so, parents, I want to just let you know not to be alarmed. It will be a drill that will include our local safety forces, that local hospitals will be involved, and it will be a safety drill where our staff and select students who are asking to participate will be in a situation, a simulation, as if there is a situation of danger at the high school. I just wanna let you know, though, it is a drill, and all precautions are being taken. And again, this is thanks to a great partnership that we have with the city of Twinsburg, Reminderville, and the township, and it will be our local police departments and mutual aid from other municipalities as well. So thanks again to Chief Noga, Chief Morgan, and just a wonderful group of individuals helping us plan, along with Mr. John Houston and Assert, our Community Emergency Response Team. It's going to be a great day, and it's an opportunity for us to check, to see how good our responses are. Two years ago, the district had a similar drill. It was in 2014, I believe it was, and we learned that we were mis stepping in some of our communication pieces of our drills. And so we've made adjustments, and when we pull the drill on the 18th of April, we're gonna check and see if the adjustments we made are the right ones, and if we're ready to go, should we ever have a really bad day here in our school district. So it's an important thing that we do. We drill with our kids, we drill with our staff on a monthly basis, and this time, in addition to that, we will be drilling with local law enforcement and the hospitals, too. So again, thanks, thanks to everyone. Just wanna make sure that you're aware, it is a drill, there will be no danger, and it will be quite a very interesting morning here in our school district. And also, I want to thank our staff members, because many of them will be participating with the kids that morning as participating in the drill. Mr. Felber, that concludes my announcements for today.
Thank you. You can do students.
Yes, sir. So we have a lot of great kids to celebrate, and I want to ask Mr. Winter to come forward. He is representing Mrs. Johnson this evening, and he has a number of great kids he wants to celebrate in the Bissell Students of the Month. And Mr. Felber, which of our Board members will be helping tonight?
Mr. Curtis will be assisting.
Wonderful.
Thanks for coming out. I'm here to recognize some awesome kids and some great staff members. So we'll start out with our Students of the Month for the month of March, and the Student of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognized outstanding student achievement in the second and third grade. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set this student apart from his or her peers. We would proudly like to acknowledge the positive accomplishments of the following students. Jessica Aspenall, from Mrs. Conrad's class. Carter Reed, from Mrs. Conrad's class. Sudeshna Nadu, from Mrs. Labus's class. J.D. Akuma, from Mrs. Holliday's class. And from Mrs. Ziska's class, Harshita Vedula. In third grade, from Mrs. Kinsella's class, Michaela Cornhoff. Brianna Nemec, from Mrs. Kinsella's class. And also from Mrs. Kinsella's class, wow, this is quite a room, Gavin O'Keefe. Come on down. All right, we're gonna have the kids hang out up here for a couple minutes, so they can get a little, get a picture for you guys. Hold up your plaques, so everyone can see 'em. How about one more round of applause for these fine students? And we have two Staff Members of the Month to recognize tonight. Unfortunately, one is not able to be here tonight. It is Mrs. Haynes. She's a PE teacher at Samuel Bissell, and she was nominated by two of our, two of her coworkers. First one was Dominic Schwed, who is a PE teacher at Samuel Bissell, and he wrote that "Mrs. Haynes is a tremendous mentor for me, and takes the time to make sure I know and understand everything that I need to know. She also spends countless hours organizing student council, safety patrol, and the student bookstore. She's a fabulous teacher who constantly looks for ways to motivate her students and improve her lesson. She is also teaching a class on adaptive PE at Kent State, and is shaping young professionals on how to run an effective adaptive PE program." Also, she was nominated by Mrs. Depew, who is a third-grade teacher at Samuel Bissell, and Mrs. Depew wrote, "Julie is such a dedicated employee. She wears so many different hats here at Bissell, from amazing teacher, to dedicated student council head, to great fitness instructor, to perfect time manager, to someone who is that say yes person to a fault, to finally, a best friend. She contributes so much to the students and staff that I inspire to behalf of what she has been for this school. She deserves the best forever and always." And that's Mrs. Haynes. So congratulations, Mrs. Haynes. And our other Staff Member of the Month is second-grade teacher, Miss Drina Jolly. And Miss Jolly was nominated by Mrs. Gadsden, who's an intervention specialist at the school, and she wrote, "I would like to nominate Miss Jolly for Staff of the Month. Miss Jolly is a wonderful, dedicated teacher that goes above and beyond her teaching duties. She is knowledgeable, patient, and kind. She is understanding and cares about her students, and it shows. Miss Jolly teaches creative lessons to her class daily, and encourages them to do their very best, no matter how hard the task might be. She is always willing to assist her colleagues and share information with them also. When I see Miss Jolly with her students, she always has a smile on her face. Miss Jolly is a team player, and she's a great asset to Samuel Bissell Elementary School." Congratulations, Miss Jolly. So, even though we still have about two months left, we still have a lot going on at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. So before I get into some of those fun activities we have going, I just wanted to thank all of you for a great school year. Thanks for your support. Thanks for the support from the Board of Education, from Mrs. Powers, Mr. Welker, Mrs. Trapp Hagan, Mrs. McKinney, everyone in the district. Just wanna thank you all. It's been a great year, and like I said, we have many, many great activities left, from Fine Arts Festivals for second and third grade, to Lunch on the Lawn, to third-grade picnic, to Career Day and Field Day. So we've got a lot of fun activities going on the rest of the school year, and we'll have a couple surprises along the way as well. So please make sure you check out the website, follow myself or Mrs. Johnson on Twitter, and we'll have all of the activities and all of the schedules. So once again, I just wanna thank you all for a great school year.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. Bissell is indeed a great place to learn and to grow. We appreciate you being here this evening. Now, I'd like to ask Mr. King to come forward. He is representing RB Chamberlain, and we have our middle-school Tigers to celebrate this evening.
And a lot of great Tigers. They are. And it goes along the same theme. We build our Tigers from the ground up. Basically, you guys do a lot of hard work as parents. I have three at home, six and under, so yay, you guys. And I thought getting in a car accident last month was bad, but, you know. There are a lot of hard work, and what we get in, when they come into Chamberlain, is amazing, and it starts at home. We truly know that. You are the first educators that your students ever have, and you model what they learn 24/7. And thank you for that. And thank you to the lower buildings for the students that we get, because we have some amazing students, and the folks that we're gonna talk about this evening are just a few of them. So for RB Chamberlain, the students receiving the honor of the Student of the Month are recognized for meeting all of the six criteria. The first, shows respect and consideration for others. Second, shows enthusiasm for academic and extracurricular activities. Third, exerts a positive influence on classmates. Fourth, exhibits leadership characteristics. Fifth, exhibits patriotism and democratic principles. Sixth, shows responsibility, such as punctuality, getting their assignments in on time, and doing the right thing. So, four of the Students of the Month for March for 7th Grade, if you would please come on up. First off, Lana Furness, please. All right. Jason Carhoff. Next up, Julia Pangonis. And last but not least, for 7th Grade, Jacob Huber. By the time some of our Tigers reach middle school, the den's a little bigger, and they may be a travel soccer, travel something. They travel more than the rest of us do. Well, your money travels with them, I'm sure, but... For 8th Grade, let's recognize Krishna Patel. Next up, Liam Naticka. Mallory Mensah. And last but not least, Zach Corinchi, please. There you go. Big smiles. Hold 'em up. There you go. Smile one more time at that tall man sitting right there. He's gonna be one of your principals next year. These are the good guys. If you need to... They do something next year, you send them back. Got that? 8th Grade? All right. Thanks, guys. Okay, let's get this out of the way. Building highlights, whatnot. We're testing. Sorry, we just had to get that out of the way right there. But there's even a positive with that. What we've seen from your students, when I've talked to them, by the rules that govern testing, we're not supposed to say, "Well, what did question three say? What did you think about question four? Is the computer right, you know, is this, that, and the other?" We're not allowed to do that. But I have pulled a lot of your students aside and said, "How do you feel about it? You know, were you ready? Were you prepared? Was there a topic we could've talked a little more about?" And the responses I've been getting so far, we started with 8th Grade the last couple days, they've been very, very positive. They've said that we were incredibly prepared, we were comfortable using the computer, the language it used was what we've been talking about, so I'm very pleased so far at the feedback I'm getting. And again, we hope that translates to some solid test scores. And another positive is, as you know, our computer labs are spread throughout both 7th and 8th Grade, so we have students testing at these labs at all times during the day. Your kids get it when we said, "Hey, your friends are testing in this lab," and you get 300 kids to go silent in a hallway. It's amazing. So again, you guys have given us some great students. Like Mrs. Powers mentioned, we are kicking off spring sports almost, as Ms. Davis found out. Track and field at Hudson was postponed to a later date because of the weather, but we have a humongous track and field team, which we're expecting great things out of. From what I understand from Coach Petrus, we have one of the best baseball teams. He's fielded in a long time, and Coach Harris is very, very excited about girls' softball. So we have a lot of great things going on. Just a few quick reminders. 7th Grade, if you have not turned in your Cedar Point money and information, we need that immediately. There's a Washington DC meeting coming up towards mid-April. Please check the website for that for 8th Grade. Oh, and a hugely positive number that we're very excited about, but we're hoping for more. We are expecting the largest 7th Grade band numbers for next year, which is awesome. Dodge is doing great things for us. Mr. Resnick is a great, great band director. But it's not too late. If you're hemming and hawing, and you're thinking about joining band for 7th Grade, come on in. The water's warm. We got plenty of room. We'll help you out. We'll hook you up. There's lots of things that we can do to help you get prepared for 7th Grade band, because, again, like I said, it's gonna be the largest band that I have seen, and we're pretty excited about what it can translate to, especially when we hand them off to the high school. If you guys have any questions about what we're doing at Chamberlain, look on the website, follow us on Twitter. We'd be more than happy to take a phone call, and we will see you soon. What, eight weeks? Eight weeks. We can do it, guys. We got this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. One more round of applause for these wonderful Students of the Month this evening. And that concludes our celebration for this night. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Powers. And before we go on to the rest of the business of the schools and our committee meetings and such, I know there's many students out there dreaming of homework or maybe snacks. Now would be a time you can go. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the business meeting. We'd love to have you, but if you'd like, now would be a good time. Well, this is about the quietest exit we had, so I'm going to go ahead and continue the meeting and move on to committee reports. And hopefully, I left you something to talk about. Mr. Curtis. For those that don't know, Mr. Curtis is President of the Board of Cuyahoga Valley Career Centers. So, Mr. Curtis?
Yep. And yes, as Mr. Felber alluded to earlier, he did steal some of my thunder. I had these all ready to announce the students and their recognition, so that's one less thing that I have to report on. But I do have some other things to report on as well. On the March 18th, the Cuyahoga Valley Career Center participated in Summit County Workforce Development Collaborative. It's about 25 representatives from Twinsburg, Chamber of Commerce, Kent State University, as well as other northeast Ohio communities and local businesses, that they met at the university campus to kind of talk about how Twinsburg can help redefine, you know, how kids can obtain necessary workforce skills and help combat the notion that a college degree is the only way to snag a successful, high-paying job. And so, I've talked about this in previous reports, that, you know, we prepare our students not only for college, but also for other areas and careers where there's a lot of jobs available, but there's not a lot of bodies to fill those jobs. And so, this is one big step in that direction in having CBCC participate in this initiative. And Amy Fletcher, you know, along with the KSU Twinsburg campus organized a meeting for purposes of creating replicable and sustainable pipeline for students entering manufacturing and healthcare jobs specifically. So I wanted to make sure that we talked about that, and that's pretty much in line with the Ramtech facility and the experience that our kids are going to be able to get as a result of having access to the state-of-the-art equipment that we have there. Also, we did have a student who was recognized by the Business Professionals of America. She was a state winner, and her name was, or his name was Gavin Bowman. As a result of being a winner of this piece, he will go on to a national competition, so hopefully later on in the year, I'll be able to report out on his progress in that endeavor. Also, as we all know, the Republican National Convention will be coming to town pretty soon during the weeks of, at least, July 18 through the 21st. Well, the career and technical students who are aged 18 and alumni and educators will have an opportunity to serve as volunteers at the convention. The committee is looking for 10 volunteers from each provider to work a four-hour shift at the convention. And the current plan is that these volunteers will wear t-shirts promoting career and technical education at the convention. The Cuyahoga Valley Career Center will serve as the staging site and transportation hub for volunteers to be transported to and from the convention. So we're pretty psyched about that, that we're going to be involved in this process, and our students will have an opportunity to kind of, you know, have some experience firsthand of the political process and what's going on at the national convention. So we're pretty happy about that. Last but not least, there was a student job fair held on the 10th of March. Over more than 300 students, along with 55 organizations from across our communities, participated in the job fair, and students applied and interviewed for seasonal employment, internships, and volunteer opportunities. And some of our students were actually hired on the spot. So we're pretty happy with that, and it's been something that's been pretty successful over the years. We're going to keep along those lines, but we're pretty happy with the level of involvement and the turnout that we had. That concludes my update for the CBCC. Any questions for my colleagues?
No, I didn't steal the thunder, because I was at the March 18th meeting. I left that all to you, but that was a very energetic meeting with folks from industry, as you mentioned, education, and representing a lot of different avenues. There were two mayors there from Twi-- Mayor Yates from Twinsburg and Mayor from Streetsboro as well, so... Other committees?
Monday, 6 o'clock, Quirkyon Technology.
Is that at RBC?
Yes, at the library.
Okay. Other committees?
Yes. I had a couple things going across my desk. We had two employees that I wanted to share with the community, some things that happened with them. We wanted to congratulate Bissel Elementary School teacher, Mrs. Mary Belinski. She was selected by the Twinsburg Rotary as the 2016 Teacher of the Year. Mr. Solera and I were at the meeting last week, as well as some of the other administrators, and it was a very nice presentation. She does a lot for our children above and beyond what's asked of her, so we're very fortunate to have her, and it was nice to have her honored at the Rotary meeting last week. Also, for athletics, I had, for the Summit County Hall of Fame, Don Jones was nominated and will be honored and put into the Hall of Fame on June 21st at the Rubber Ducks game. And just a couple of his highlights. He is our, a fast, I'm sorry, not fast, baseball coach at Twinsburg High School, and he's been coaching for 29 seasons. His career record is 377 to 271, so it's a .5, I'm terrible at baseball, sorry, .582%. He had, in 1990, the Double A State Pole Champions, Division II Final Four in 1990, and quite a few other things. Some of the really cool things that I thought, for some of the student athletes, he had Brian Vince. These athletes were put into the, they went into professional baseball. Brian Vince was Frontier League. Dan Grummett was Triple A Tampa Bay. Aaron Swenson, A Baltimore. Gerald Orink was a rookie for Milwaukee Brewers. And Scott Afros was with the Chicago Cubs. So, lots of good things happening in the school. So we congratulate Don Jones on his induction into the Hall of Fame, and we also congratulate our teacher, Ms. Belinski, for being the Rotarian, or the Rotary Teacher of the Year. And that's all I have.
Other committees?
Finance Committee meets Tuesday, April 12th, 7:30, at the central office.
Oh, 7:30?
Yeah, 0. 7:30 AM.
Yes. Thank you. In policy, while there's no updates to policy, there is a second reading of policy, so that is a result of a past policy meeting. Any other comments, committees?
All right. We're at the point of our meeting of remonstrance. Persons wishing to address the Board of Education should submit a blue card similar to this. Those are found in the lobby prior to the meeting. Submit that to the Treasurer prior to the meeting, and so that they may be recognized by the Board President and welcome to make comment. No formal action will be taken on the subjects that are not included on this agenda until the Board has an opportunity to study them. Comments regarding personnel must be submitted in writing through the Office of the Superintendent. Although there is normally adequate time for citizens to express themselves at the Board meeting, if several people wish to speak, each person will be allotted five minutes until the total time of 30 minutes is used. Each person addressing the Board is asked to give his or her name and their address. I do have one blue card. Mr. Felber, do you have others? Okay, so I'll ask Mr. Bill Snow to come forward.
Good evening. My name is Bill Snow. I live at 3054 Mathers Way here in Twinsburg. Members of the School Board, Mrs. Powers, fellow administrators, and fellow district residents, I'm before you this evening to discuss my perspective on classroom testing. I understand that you've heard quite a bit about this last year and this year. You've heard Common Core, Park, AIR, and the term high-stakes testing. My wife and I have two daughters in the school system, a 7th grader and a junior. And I'll tell you what, we've been here for most of their career, their educational career, and we're pleased. We really like the Twinsburg school system. I didn't bring a pile of data. I haven't spent several days looking at the latest trends or news stories about Common Core and high-stakes testing. Not going to share concerns about privacy, you know, big data, test anxiety, or similar topics. I am, however, going to share my personal perspectives and opinions on classroom testing. This is the second year that I have refused testing for my daughter, who's now in 7th grade. The decision was well thought out and one that we took very seriously. We considered all options and decided that testing was the best for our daughter and the best for future education here in Twinsburg. I get it. None of you ran down to Columbus. You didn't advocate for race for the top money. You didn't say bring Common Core, and you certainly didn't ask for this testing. But you have to deal with it. It's been forced down your throats, and you have to, you have to follow their rules. But I don't think it's good for us. It wasn't until I received a letter from Mrs. Powers and my wife received a call from the principal at RBC that I realized that maybe the Board and the administration doesn't quite understand why I and perhaps other parents have refused these tests. Over the past several years, children have been subjected to more and more testing in the classroom. There was an article in the Dayton paper today that's 12 hours now for an elementary student. Listen, tests are important. They're the ways that we gauge progress and understanding of measurable items. However, they're not the only way that we measure these things, especially in the classroom. And when I'm talking about testing, I'm talking about high-stakes testing. Here's my concern. The more time that we prepare for these tests, the less time teachers have to teach. I chose those words very carefully. Let me repeat them one more time. The more time that's used to prepare for these tests, the less time teachers have available for teaching. What's happening is that kids aren't learning. Instead, they're being prepped for tests. They don't, what happens when this happens? They don't learn. They don't achieve, and they aren't inspired. They aren't prepared for life. Instead, they become robots trained to take tests, which the goal is to yield high results on state report cards. The ultimate goal should be to prepare our children for life, not for tests. There's a second concern I have. When teachers are given a teaching manual, they lose the creative flair that they bring into the classroom. They lose their ability to bring that passion in the classroom. Heck, they even lose enthusiasm for their jobs. The negative results of this would be that our children won't experience fun and enthusiastic teachers, and whenever I say that, I always think of Mr. Funk. Instead, over time, teachers will become instructors reading from manuals, will lose good, qualified, tenured teachers, and they'll be replaced with individuals who essentially be robots, prepping our children for these tests and standard curriculums. Ohio has 611 school districts. Why? Because education's a local matter that should be decided and influenced by locals themselves. We don't answer to Columbus. Columbus answers to us. So here's my request to you, the Board of Education. You were elected to serve the community and represent the voters and residents that put you in those chairs. I voted for many of you, knowing that you would listen to both sides of the debate regarding educational matters. I strongly urge you to contemplate my concerns. I hope that you understand that I want what's best for my children and the children also in the district. I want you to represent my concerns when you're talking to the Ohio Department of Education, our state legislators, and anyone else that may have a stake in this. It's my desire that you stand up for our district and our students and push back on these tests. Tell Columbus no. Real quickly, on April 4th, just this week, a bunch of congressmen, including our Congressman, David Joyce, sent a letter to Secretary King clarifying their intent on Every Student Succeeds Act. Let me read two lines from that letter. "The new law makes a fundamental change, giving individual states sole responsibility for determining the importance of the 95% requirement in school accountability." Further, it reads, "The Every Student Succeeds Act is intended to empower parents and ensure that teachers, administrators, and school districts are given increased flexibility regarding student opt-out," which could also be read as refusal. Pretty clear to me that we, as parents, have the right to refuse this test for our children. Our elected officials in Congress are dictating this to the Department of Education that that was their intent with this. Also, districts are given flexibility regarding parents who refuse the test. So let me conclude with this. I view the role as a school board member, a superintendent, an administrator, and a teacher to do what's best for our children. Sometimes that isn't the report card that comes out of Columbus, but it could be the end result if we're doing what's best for our children. I want you to positively influence them, to get them excited about school. I want those individuals to bring their passion to their jobs and make a difference in a child's life. That's why a lot of teachers are in the classroom, to make that difference. I expect all of you to take an active role in fighting for what's best for our district and to stand and not stand by and let Washington via Columbus change education in Twinsburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. The only blue card I have. Is there anybody else? We're going to move on to our G1 Treasury Report and Recommendations Meeting Minutes. We resolved that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, work session of March 9th, 2016, and the regular meeting of March 16, 2016, as sent to the Board under separate cover. Is there a motion for approving the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Curtis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Tore Waldron. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And G1 passes 5-0. Next is Action Items Personnel. Without objection from my colleagues, I'll read H1, 2, and 3 together. H1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certificated and licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached Exhibit H1, as per the date, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. H2, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached Exhibit H2, as per the date, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background check. And finally, H3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached Exhibit H3, as per the date, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Is there a motion for those three items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Davis. And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Solera. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And H1, 2, and 3 pass 5-0. Next, on to Action Items, Section I. I will read 1 through 8 without objection from my colleague. I1, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from George G. Dodge PTA Care of Joanne Schaus of Twinsburg, Ohio, in the amount of $924 to provide transportation for the 4th grade students to the Cleveland Museum of Natural History, per the attached Exhibit I1. I2, donation from Mitchell's Ice Cream, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation valued at $90 from Mitchell's Ice Cream, care of Amanda Dempsey, Cleveland, Ohio. The students at George G. Dodge received an ice cream as reward for the Black History Door Decorating Contest, per the attached Exhibit I2. Moving on to I3, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a $50 donation from Heinen's of Twinsburg, Ohio, to be used to help fund a popsicle party for the school Wilcox, Bissel, and Dodge that collects the most pounds of canned fruit to benefit the Emergency Assistance Center, per the attached Exhibit I3. I4, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts a donation from the Twinsburg Baseball League of Twinsburg, Ohio, in the amount of $1,000 to be used towards the purchase of dirt for the baseball and softball fields, and that's Exhibit I4. I5, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached list of media center items to be deleted from inventory, per the attached Exhibit I5. I6, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the second reading of the following listed new and/or revised Board of Education policies, and as are exhibited for you in the Agenda and I6. I7, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a lease agreement, 2016, between Twin Days Inc. and the Twinsburg City School District, as sent to the Board under separate cover. And finally, I8, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a lease agreement for the City of Twinsburg Parks and Recreation Department to utilize yellow school buses for the spring/summer 2016. The City of Twinsburg will compensate the Twinsburg Board of Education for the use of the buses, including mileage, gas, and bus drivers, per the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement as sent to the Board under separate cover. Is there a motion for those eight items as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera. Is there a second? By Mr. Curtis. And let's see, any discussion? Again, second reading of the policies as noted. Thank you very much for all the donations. Dodge PTA, Mitchell's Ice Cream, Heinen's, Twinsburg Baseball League. I don't know if there's any further comments, my colleagues? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And moving on to I9 now, as we've had the second reading of the policy, this will be approval of new or revised Board of Education policies. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following new or revised Board of Education policies, and again, the same are listed there in I9. Is there a motion for those policy approvals?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Tore Waldron. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Davis. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Anything to highlight from our administrators? Again, this is the second reading. Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Felver?
Yes. I9 passes 5-0. We're now at miscellaneous. Is there anything from my colleagues?
Yeah, I have a comment. I just want to comment with respect to Mr. Snow's remarks. Appreciate your concern that you've laid out, the concern that you've laid out, and can also appreciate the state of affairs, not only nationally, but also in our state of Ohio relative to the amount of testing that our students have been subjected to. I don't think that it's, comes to any surprise to anyone up here, as well as our superintendent, that we share your concern with respect to the amount of testing that our students are subjected to, also understanding, you know, that we're bound by state laws, as well as federal law, but that I don't think that we're gonna discontinue our efforts of being vocal in Columbus, the Board of Education, the Ohio Board of Education, as well as ODE. I myself spent a lot of time in Columbus communicating with ODE my concerns as a, as a parent, as a board member, and also as an education professional. I'll continue to do that. I've even had conversation with Mr. Joyce. When he visited the Career Center, we had a pretty nice conversation around not only just the initiatives that are going on at the Career Center, but also what's happening at the federal level with respect to ESSA and testing in particular. So we're on it, and again, I appreciate your words, and know that your words, as well as concerns of other parents that have come to my attention, don't fall on deaf ears. So we'll continue to pursue these efforts and find what I would like to say is a happy medium, where, you know, we can accomplish what we need in the way of understanding what kids know and are able to do, and provide the resources necessary and the interventions necessary for them to be successful academically in our district. So just know that I've just, from a personal level, I appreciate your comments, and I share your concern.
And I just wanna piggyback on that as well. I have three children in the school district. My oldest is a senior. My youngest is a fourth grader. So I, as a parent as well, I do understand and I feel your frustrations with the amount of testing that our children are doing, and as Mr. Curtis said, we do hear and we do express our concerns, you know, on that, on that topic. So thank you for expressing your concerns on that. We do hear it, and, you know, like I said, as Mr. Curtis says, we are doing, you know, what we can as a board to help alleviate some of that and find that happy medium and do what we can to, because all of our children are affected, you know. We have children, as well as you, and I think the whole community understands that, and we will continue to do what we can on our end. So thank you.
Other comments?
Nope. And just, very quick, and this may sound like very general, but as a former teacher, wife of teacher, most, most teachers, all teachers that I know, most teachers I know get into it because they love teaching your children. And they're not so much in it for the money, not so much for big perks and bonuses, but they love teaching your children, so they have concerns as well, and we, we hear it.
Thank you. I guess everybody's jumped on the bandwagon. I'll just note that while this is my third year on the Board, this Board, previous colleagues, as well as this current administration, have voiced concerns over testing, and so this is not the first time this topic has been addressed. I know it's been addressed from Superintendent Powers many times, so, you know, for the matter of those that may be listening for the first time, this is not a new topic, and our position has been, you know, just to continue to advocate, you know, on the amount of testing. I know the state did reduce some. I'm sure other people's view, maybe not enough, but your voice, voice is well heard. Thank you for your comments. All right, with nothing further, Ms. Lane, is there anything? Mrs. Powers, Mr. Welker?
We got one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Matt?
I, just, just kinda, a couple of things, kinda highlight our students, and this really was in district, but our library put on a couple of events since our last meeting. One was the second and third grade spelling bee, which was the first year that they've done it. Had 20 kids from second grade, 20 kids from third grade, and was able to go out and see it, and actually, it, not sold out, but booked up, and people were a little upset, so they're hoping to expand it last, next year. They went 10 rounds, and out of the 40 kids, 14 students went and lasted all 10 rounds, which was amazing. And these words that they, you know, that they were, they were spelling were, you know, very, very tough for, for that age group. So that's a testament to the kids, testament to our teachers, and also to the library for putting it together, as well as the Coffee for a Cause, which was last Saturday night. An outstanding display of talent from our students at Chamberlain and the high school. There was some tremendous vocal singing, a cappella, musical groups playing, as well as some dramatic poetry and readings. So just, just other sampling of the tremendous talent that we have in the district, and that's, you know, it's exciting to see, see the students come out and be able to do things like that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Solara. If there's no further comments, the Board does have need for executive session. We do not anticipate any further business after we reconvene from executive session. So I'm gonna make the motion that we go into executive session at 7:58. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Tore Waldron. Roll call, please.
Mr. Felver?
Yes.
Mrs. Tore Waldron?
Yes.
Mr. Solara?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes. Thank you, and that item passes 5-0. We are now gonna move to executive session. Thank you, and have a good night.